Well, looks like it's 5:15, at least by my computer clock, which is fairly accurate.
Yep.
I'd like to call the order. The Rock Valley College Board of Trustees meeting for Community College District Number 511. The regular board meeting for September 23rd, 2025, 5:15 PM. Before the roll call, I'd just like to acknowledge there'll be a slight agenda change. We're going to move the closed session up to right after Item G, approval of minutes. So, all right, we have a roll call. Oh, and for this evening, we have Trustee Trojan acting as our recording secretary. Thank you, Bob.
Trustee Soltow.
Here.
Nelson. Trojan here. Simpson.
Here.
Gudia.
Here.
Blake.
Here.
Gorski.
Here. I don't believe we... Trustee Goldsmith won't be attending, and that Trustee Nelson should walk in any minute. Okay. Communications and petitions. Do we have any other communications or petitions that you're aware of?
No communications or petitions.
I'm going to treat this as communications. We have a packet of information here from Cultivate Power from Chicago, Illinois, with an introductory proposal or a suggestion for solar energy panels on the campus. It just arrived, and I'm going to hand it over to President Speerman for his staff to review and give us a recommendation.
Thank you, sir.
Any other communications petitions? Any recognition of visitors? Any general presentations?
No general presentations.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 2nd, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting and the August 26th, 2025 regular meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Gudia.
Seconded.
Seconded by Bob Trojan.
Soltow.
Yes.
Nelson. Trojan, yes. Simpson.
Yes.
Gudia.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
We do have a quorum, even though we have two missing members.
Right. Okay, thank you very much. So, I would like to move Item K up to this point now, and this will be to discuss security procedures, school building safety, security and the use of personnel and equipment to respond to actual and threatened or reasonably potential danger to safety employees, student staff, the public, public property per Section 2C8, and I guess possibly the employment, employment compensation, discipline, performance of specific employees or independent contracts in a park, recreational or educational setting. Have a second, or a motion rather. You have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Trojan, seconded by Trustee Gudia. Roll call.
Soltow.
Yes.
Trojan, yes. Simpson.
Yes.
Gudia.
Yes.
Blake.
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes.
And?
We would like Executive Director IT, John Wicker, and COO, Rick Jakes. And of course, Attorney Matt Gartner, and Director Cho, that Trustee Nelson is now attending the meeting.
Nelson. Hey, John, thank you. You're in. We're going into closed first. Going into closed. Pulling it up. You missed the vote to go into closed, but you made it just in time for the closed.
Done.
Warning system is active. Well, we were in closed session. We're coming back into open session. Thank you for your either participation or patience and no, no decisions, no final actions were taken as a result of the close. So we're going to move on to H. Action items. Approve claim sheet. To have a motion to approve claim sheet. Check register August 2025 BR 8312.
So moved.
Motion by Trojan, seconded by Nelson.
So down.
And any discussion?
Oh, sorry.
No discussion? Roll call.
So down.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Trojan, yes. Simpson's now gone. Kudia?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
McGorski.
Yes. Okay. Action item number two under H. Approved dual and articulated credit memorandum of understanding for Keith Country Day School, BR 8313. And I'd enter, you know, I ask you to do these jointly in Rockford Public Schools, District 205, BR 8314. Do I hear a motion to adopt both of these?
So moved.
Motion by Kudia, seconded by Trojan.
Okay.
Discussion. Roll call.
So down.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Trojan, yes. Kudia?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Gorski?
Yes. Motion to approve. Do I hear a motion to approve Running Start intergovernmental agreement with Rockford Public Schools, District Number 205, BR 83105?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Kudia. Any discussion? Only thing I'd like to say is I'd like to thank everybody who participates in the dual and articulated credit and the Running Start programs. Roll call.
So down.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Trojan, yes. Kudia?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Gorski.
Gorski says yes. So we have a motion to approve purchase reports, and we'll do these separately. Purchase report A, FY 2026 amendments, BR 8316-A. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Kudia. My only question I have, is there been any changes to these reports since the COW? Is there anybody here to speak to that?
There was addition, additions that were discussed at the COW relating to the air gas for the grant money.
Right, but that was discussed at the COW, and you were going to bring it forward and put it in this report.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions or discussion on BR 8316A? Hearing none, roll call.
So down.
Yes.
Trojan, yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes. Do I hear a motion to approve Purchase Report B, FY 2026 Purchases, BR 8316-B?
So moved.
Motion by Kudia, seconded by Crystal or...
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So motion by Kudia, seconded by Sol Tao. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
So down.
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Trojan, yes. Kudia?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Gorski.
Yes. This is the first reading. Rock Valley College Board Policy Manual, Article Two, Operations, BR 8317. No action is required. Is there any discussion on it? Hearing none, we'll move on to other business. Any new business?
No new business.
Any unfinished business?
No unfinished business.
Okay. Updates and reports. The President's update.
Thank you, Chairman Gorski, and good evening once again, Board of Trustees. We began the month of September with our Professional Development Day. It was well organized and filled with excellent workshops and speakers. I also appreciated Trustees Trojan and Goldsmith for attending. I also want to thank the Planning Committee for a great job. Our distinguished alumnus and Oscar nominated filmmaker Bing Lu spoke about his experience in overcoming his childhood trauma to become the successful producer that he is. Currently, he has a movie playing at the Alamo Drafthouse Wrigleyville titled Preparation for the Next Life. According to what I've understand is that he's already in Oscar discussions. As part of the Fall Professional Development Day, we also celebrate employees longevity, specifically regarding years of employment. We acknowledge employee longevity in five-year increments. Twenty-two employees were celebrated for their five years. Nine employees were celebrated for their 10 years. Thirteen employees were celebrated for their 15 years. Ten employees were celebrated for their 20 years. Seven employees were celebrated for 25 years. Four employees were celebrated for their 30 years. One employee was celebrated for 35 years, which is our faculty member, William Walters. And this year, we celebrated one employee, Charlotte Parsons, for her 40 years of commitment to Rock Valley College. So we appreciate them, and I want to thank you and them for believing in the power of student success at RVC. Also, during the Fall Professional Development Day, we celebrated the Rookie of the Year, Employee of the Year, and Leader of the Year. From student trustee and current trade grant recruiter Ryan Russo received the Rookie of the Year Award. Academic Program Specialist Rhonda Hutter received the Employee of the Year Award. RVC Foundation Chief Development Officer Brittany Freiberg received the Leader of the Year Award, and we appreciate them and thank them for modeling the way with positive leadership on campus. In the words of our faculty member, Dr. Martin Quirk, "There has been a lot of mention of faculty at the beginning of the semester, but I wanted to recognize all of the efforts of the other members of the RVC community. In my 27 years, I have seen few semesters start this smoothly. I am very proud to be a part of this institution. We are long ways from sustaining excellence on a daily basis, but unsolicited feedback like this lets us know that we are on the right track." While meeting next, and while meeting with Mayor McNamara this month, he was reflecting on the great progress the community has made in regards to education over the last few years. His plan for highlighting it is a series of op-eds in the RR Star, which he began last week, followed by RPS, Rockford University, and we will anchor it with RVC sometime in October. The aforementioned initiatives truly embody our mission of empowering students and community through lifelong learning and our strategic plan highlighting access, exceptional education, exceptional training, and cultural excellence and belonging. That concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for President Spearman?
Just a comment if I could.
Go ahead.
I did sit and listen to the keynote speaker Bing Lu at the development program, and I'll tell you, if you ever want to hear a heart-wrenching story, you should listen to this guy and what he has gone through while he lived here in Rockford. It's amazing. I mean, it's really a story that should be heard by everybody in this room.
Any other comments, questions? Thank you very much. Leadership team update.
Greetings, trustees. Eric Brown, ADA Compliance Coordinator, and I recently became members of the National ADA Trainers Leadership Network in association with the Great Lakes ADA Center. The ADA TLN is a network of skilled trainers seeking to make change in their communities by providing education on disability awareness and the ADA to stakeholders in their communities using a basic ADA curriculum nationally vetted by the ADA National Network. I just wanted to recognize Mr. Brown and myself.
Great. Congratulations.
The National Museum of the American Latino States Hispanic Heritage Month is a month-long celebration of Hispanic and Latino history and culture. While we celebrate Hispanic and Latino communities beyond this month, from September 15th to October 15th, we give extra recognition to the many contributions made to the history and culture of the United States, including important advocacy, work, vibrant art, popular and traditional foods, and much more. Each year, the National Council of Hispanic Employees Program Managers have led the process to select the annual theme and corresponding poster that federal agencies, organizations, and schools have used when observing Hispanic Heritage Month. The theme for 2025 is Collective Heritage: Honoring the Past, Inspiring the Future. Rock Valley College kicked off Hispanic Heritage Month with flavors of Hispanic and Latino culture by having food, music, games, and giveaways in the atrium for over 180 students and employees on Monday, September 15th, 2025. Kudos to the Hispanic Heritage Committee, Promoting an Inclusive Community, or PACE, the Cultural Excellence and Belonging staff, and the other employees and students who contribute to hosting an outstanding event. That concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Keith Byrne?
I just have a comment. I would encourage all of you to hug your favorite Hispanic before October 15th. Thank you.
I'll be torn. Man, you just... My favorite?
Must be feeling better, Clark.
Yeah.
Actually, I'm fighting allergies.
And any other questions or comments or... And any other questions or comments or... Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Byrne.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Trustees. A few quick updates this evening. First, we are pleased to welcome to campus our high school, our district high school counselors to our annual High School Counselor Breakfast on Friday, September 26th. Each year, we invite all of our area high schools to come and learn about any new programs, courses, services, updates to enrollment process, and the support available to their current students, and continue to build upon those positive relationships. Next, our homecoming week is slated for September 29th to October 3rd. The week is filled with fun activities, window painting, homecoming court elections, a tailgate party, a drive-in movie, and concludes next Friday with our homecoming dance on October 3rd. Finally, next week is our annual College Night. On Wednesday, October 1st, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the Physical Education Center, we invite all of our area high school students, current RVC students, and the community to join over one hundred and twenty college and university representatives that will be on campus, so our community can learn more about the college application process and about the many higher education opportunities that exist locally, regionally, and nationally. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Dr. Byrne. Any questions?
Yes. On your high school counselors meeting, your first topic, did you discuss scholarship opportunities with them?
It happens this coming Friday, and I do believe that is on the agenda, but I will double check.
I mean, it'd be obviously a good opportunity because, as I'll show you later, we got always more money than we're able to give away. So they need to be told how much, you know, what you can get.
Yeah. I know we have informed them in the past, but I will double check this Friday's agenda.
Okay.
Trustee Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For your College Night, have we... I haven't seen any advertisements for that. Are we advertising that?
Yes, sir, we are. We do that on our various social media platforms that targets a population that you and I are not a part of, and we certainly promote that to our high schools. But yes, the promotions are out. It's actually an organization, it's a statewide Illinois organization that coordinates the event. We are the host site.
But they're the ones responsible for most of the marketing.
Correct.
Not us.
Correct.
For this event.
We are also doing our own.
Any other questions? You don't want to ask them to hug your favorite high school counselor?
Of course. You can do that Friday, but with permission.
Dr. Huntley?
Good evening, Trustees. The Human Resources Department has initiated the HR Roadshow this semester. The purpose of this program is to increase communication and collaboration across campus. We have reached out to campus leaders to request to meet with their employee groups. Representatives from Human Resources provide a brief presentation sharing the functions of HR and ways in which we support our employees. This effort supports the action steps identified from the Culture Survey and the Service Excellence Survey to increase communication. Additionally, this program aligns with the strategic pillars by providing access to resources, illuminating the opportunities for training, and promoting a healthy and thriving culture at the college. We look forward to visiting with fifteen various departmental groups this fall semester and then offering the same opportunity next semester to other groups. This concludes my report. Thank you.
Any questions for Dr. Huntley? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Trustees. We have reached the point in the fall semester where enrollment is mostly secured. There continues to be some fluctuation due to late start classes. As of this week, fall credit hour enrollment is four percent ahead of last year, five percent ahead of budget, and one percent ahead of stretch goal. When you combine summer two and fall, FY 26 credit hour enrollment is six percent ahead of last year, seven percent ahead of budget, and three percent ahead of the stretch goal.
Great. Good news. Six percent ahead of last year. I mean, that's really, that's a good number. Thank you.
Thank you.
That it?
He's happy.
Any other questions? Any other accolades from Trustee Trojan?
I just gave him.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much, and we are, thank you very much for that report, Heather. Dr. Heather Hansen?
Good evening, Trustees. On Thursday, the ninth of October, from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., Rock Valley College will celebrate Manufacturing Day at the Advanced Technology Center, commonly referred to as the ATC. We anticipate between three hundred and twenty-five to four hundred students joining from the following school districts: Belvidere, Belvidere North, North Boone, Byron, Hananega, Stillman, Winnebago, and the five high schools from RPS 205, which are Auburn, East, Guilford, Jefferson, and Roosevelt. This exercise is being done in conjunction and partnership with CNC, which is the Career Education Associates of North Central Illinois. Some of the companies and manufacturers involved in Manufacturing Day at the ATC this year include 425 MFG, Aerotech, All-Wool Machinery, Mid-American Regional Council of Carpenters, Fastenal, Forest City Gear, Henig, Ingersoll Cut and Tools, Midstates Concrete, Plumbing and Pipe Fitters Local 23, Swenson Spreader, Women Up Today Manufacturing, and Youngburg Industries. All members of the Board of Trustees are invited to view and participate in the day's events.
Now, this is what, October, what?
October the ninth.
Ninth?
Yes, from eight to one at the ATC.
Any other questions for...
All those companies you've mentioned are going to have an exhibit there, is that it?
Yes, they're going to be there.
Wow.
Yep.
Are you going to publicize this, you know, because frankly, around the area, we're about the only ones that are doing anything to recognize manufacturing. The chamber is absolutely dead. There's nothing going on in Boone County, so you're the only organization that's celebrating twenty percent of our workforce.
Well, it's a dual-pronged approach to doing this, so CNC will help us advertise because they are the ones who coordinated all the school districts, so there's a lot of advertising going on there.
You're hosting them at the ATC.
Right, but then the other thing too as well is our marketing department will help us take care of that too as well. Yep.
And there will be, there's a scheduled press conference, I believe, as well, so we'll get the positive media from it.
Yeah, get some media.
And there are some view books on the back table that Only Way Out, please take some, that you can share with your community constituents. Thank you.
And I'd like to thank you, Dr. Stewart, for calling those organizations out specifically here that we get it out in the open. Really do appreciate it. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much for the report, Dr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board. I'd like to give you some project updates for the, a portion of the projects that are currently going on here at the college. First is the HSC third-floor build-out and elevator installation. The project continues to move forward. We have had to work through delays in receiving products, particularly in the HVAC area of the project. We are down to a punch list of items for the construction contractor, which we consider minor, which includes the replacement or installation of curtain track for the massage therapy and floor transitions and the new doorway openings. We anticipate that these products will be here in approximately three weeks. Next week, POM is starting to begin building out the steelcase furniture in the site and pieces of... We do have a couple pieces of new furniture and whiteboard, whiteboards for the classrooms that have longer lead times, so we'll be continuing to monitor that. We're hoping to have a move-in date planned for the complete, completion, a move-in date for the end of October or early November, excuse me. The elevator shaft is underway and under construction right now. The elevator has also been delivered to the site. We're hoping the contractor will complete the elevator shaft installation in the next couple of weeks, and they can begin installing the elevator. We hope the project can be completed before the Christmas break. Classroom building two, the project has started back up now that the fall semester has started and faculty have returned from their summer break. Last week, the architect firm held the arts program meeting to discuss the needs of their programs. This week, the architects are meeting with the music program, and on October 8th, 2025, they will be meeting to discuss the Black Box Theater. The architect will be completing the program review portion of the project and will enter the schematic design portion of the project. This is when preliminary design concepts and space allocation is started. The project is planned to be completed in July of 2028. Tuck pointing turret wall replacement. As the board is aware, during our tuck pointing project, we had a section of the wall on the Stenchham Student Center Bridge turret collapse. This area houses the stairs between the ground, excuse me, between the Greek ground floor creek area and the bridge. The architect and engineers have developed bid specifications which will utilize a CMU block construction format, and the project is on the street for bid right now. The deadline for submission of the bid is October 3rd, 2025. The preliminary estimate for the CMU block wall replacement is between one hundred and sixty and two hundred and ten thousand dollars. The JCSM HVAC desiccant wheel update. The desiccant wheel for the HVAC repairs was ordered in early August by the contractor. It is due to ship out on October 20th, 2025. Once it arrives, the manufacturer will call Hartwig, the company who has, was awarded the bid, and will start to set up an installation date. The installation will take two to three days. We are working right now to try and determine the best time to conduct the installation. Currently, we are still moving through the old unit, just not using the desiccant wheel and the damaged parts. We have not completely been able to run the building on one air handler with the one unit that needs to be repaired shut down completely, because we'll need to be able to shut down the unit completely. We're having engineers try and figure out a way to run the building effectively on the one air handling unit. If we can do that, we can install the desiccant wheel anytime that it arrives here for installation. If not, we'll have to find a time that we can shut the building down for two or three days, which may mean Christmas break, and hopefully the temperature will remain warm enough that we can do that. Last item for an update, the boiler replacement is moving forward. We're currently awaiting the arrival of the boiler. It's expected in mid-October, and once it arrives, they will complete the demo and begin the final installation, and the project is scheduled for completion in November.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Rick James, I have a question on the, you're talking about the replacement and regarding the air handler and possibly having to shut it down. What do you think the chances are that they'll be able to support the building with one air handler?
So the engineer that we use, have used for many years, Jeff Oaks, seems to be pretty confident that he can make it run on one handler for a day or two. He is, they're going to be coming out over the weekend to try and figure that out, so I'll know more here very shortly as to whether or not we can do it. I'm hoping that that's the case. But that, until he gets out here and looks at things, I mean, he's looking at it remotely, but until he can change things and adjust things without people in the building, we won't know for sure.
Are there any options to not shutting it down, supplementing the air handlers somehow or anything?
We can't, they want to, we can't work on the air handler while it has power, so it's not an option, so.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Dr. Amanda Smith, and I'd like to call out Dr. Amanda Smith for her excellent job in subbing for President Spearman while he was out on vacation, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm very happy to share that the dental hygiene program had their site visit from the Commission on Dental Accreditation last week. Two peer reviewers visited the campus and thoroughly explored the dental hygiene program, meeting with faculty and students. The visit went extremely well, and they were impressed by our facilities, in particular, our dental hygiene clinic. Thank you to Dr. Marie Navikas, our program chair, for her work in preparation for this visit.
Any other questions, comments?
Thank you.
Thank you. That was pithy. Anything else? Okay. Wasn't sure, Gloria, if you were, had a question or reaching out to hug me or what, so.
Both. No, I'm kidding.
Okay. ICTA report?
I don't have, I can give an ICTA report, but actually, this last meeting, I'll prepare a written report for the next meeting.
Could you just remind us of an upcoming ICTA event in our region?
Well, we have scheduled, I believe, a, we're hosting a regional meeting, and we have three excellent speakers. We'll have our lobbyist from Springfield, who tells us what's going to go on or what is going on in Springfield. We have the executive director of the Illinois Community College Trustees Association, who will let us know what's going on in the federal side. And we have an outstanding speaker on computers, and I'm looking at him.
So two excellent speakers and a filler like sawdust.
The, I think you'll be the hit of the show.
I think so. Any other comments on that? That's November 6th, is it? Okay, thank you very much.
November 6th?
Okay. Fifth?
Yes.
Six, November 6th.
At the Aviation Career Center.
Six, okay.
We're scheduling an AAR tour
Yep.
from four to five, and then meeting, the Northwest Region Trustee Association meeting will take place at five p.m.
Yeah.
So in all the years I've been on this board, people listen to me twice, and I've said in passing at one recent meeting, I like to bump up the student trustee report because I always find them very exciting, and I got the word that they bumped up the student trustee report on the updates and reports, so there you go.
My turn?
Your turn.
It's time.
To the Board of Trustees, and forgive me for my voice, it's a little bit raspy, to the Board of Trustees, the Chair and President, Dr. Spearman, I'm pleased to submit my student trustee report for September 23rd, 2025, covering recent student activities and campus engagement observations. Welcome Week recap. Welcome Week wrapped up with some great activities before classes started. Thursday had go-karts and a food truck, which gave students fun recreational opportunities and different dining options on campus. These activities created a nice atmosphere for students to reconnect and meet new people in the Rock Valley College community. Friday finished Welcome Week with club leadership training. Other executive officers and I learned about advisor roles and how to effectively run our student clubs. As officers, we got significantly, significantly more information this year compared to last year, which has been really helpful for understanding how to better manage student organizations. Student Government Association update. We had a good turnout at our recent SGA meeting with about seven to ten people showing up. During this meeting, we talked about potential upcoming events and went over rules and regulations that are coming up. After the meeting, I went around and asked different members what they expected from SGA, what they wanted to see happen, and what would make SGA a fun and engaging organization. I thought it was important to get their input on where we should be heading. What's the TE Tuesday update? I went to their first meeting in the student life area. The whole thing was set up for people to share about themselves and have relaxed conversation about their lives and college experiences, and had a really welcome feeling to it. They provided refreshments, including cookies and tea, which made the whole community-building aspect work even better. I had to leave early, but I was impressed by how many people were participating and the quality of discussions happening throughout the meeting. The casual format really helped people connect with each other. Rock Valley College InterVarsity update. InterVarsity has regular programming with prayer meetings on Mondays at 1:30 p.m. and Bible studies on Wednesdays at 1:30 p.m. as well. They recently had separate guys' night and girls' night events, and both are really well-received, along with some lightsaber fights as well, so. InterVarsity has seen some impressive growth this year. At their second meeting in the atrium, about thirty-five people showed up. That's a big increase from last year, and there were lots of new faces. This growth shows the recruitment during the Club Involvement Fair really paid off. The Black Student Union update. I attended the BSU meeting where we talked about upcoming events and figured out leadership roles within the organization. We also planned what kind of events we wanted to host this semester. We discussed several potential events, including an Abonia Ball, movie nights, karaoke events, and roundtable discussions. We also started planning trips for later in the school year. Plus, we talked about hot destruction meetings. When we don't have formal agenda items, we can keep people engaged even during more casual gatherings. Overall, student body and campus engagement observations. Students seem to be getting the hang of their classes, and they appear to be more settled as they get comfortable with campus life. I think the main challenge for those of us in club leadership, and returning members too, will be keeping engagement up throughout the semester. We have way more students who sign up for clubs compared to spring 2025 and fall 2024, but keeping this initial excitement going will take some work. Students have shown their interest in getting involved, so now it's up to student leaders to maintain that engagement through good programming. One of the biggest challenges will be figuring out what type of events will keep members actively involved. A lot of clubs have a solid foundation with returning leadership, who can use what they've learned from previous years to better serve the new members coming in. I also have some additional keynotes to make as well, starting with BSU's cookout. That was an incredible event. It was basically a cookout led by BSU and invited many of... It was basically a cookout led by BSU and invited many of, many of the students of the community and the community as a whole, in particular, black students around Rock Valley College campus, to come out, gather around, and, you know, just hang out, and we had some people come out. We had Terrica Huntley come out, we had Dr. Howard Spearman come out, and many others come out as well. So, I'd like to thank you all for coming out and being a part of this event. I can't forget about Dr. Stewart as well, so, yeah, so. But, but it was a great event. We played bags, and we did tug rope, I think?
Tug of war?
Yeah, tug of war. We did tug of war. My side won, obviously, so, yeah. And we played some pretty, pretty good music, so, and everyone had a great time. The last thing that I want to bring about is, last week, September 19th, I attended a conference. It was the ICCB SAC Conference, which is basically the Illinois Community College Board Student Advisory Committee. Pretty much, it was a delegation of different student trustees from different colleges, such as Parkland and Waboo.
Babunzi.
Yes, thank you. And many other colleges, and it was hosted at Lakeland College. So, it was, we got to see Lakeland College and see what that was about, and it was a very nice campus. We were served food, and one of the biggest things is I got to talk to other student trustees about how their board of trustees goes about in terms of operating and how they best serve their roles as student trustees. And another thing is, we held, we pretty much held, we held elections for different positions, so there was chairman, vice chairman, secretary, and then advocate committee chairman, pretty much someone who advocates on behalf of bringing issues up. So, basically, what SAC is, if anyone doesn't know, is basically, it's all of us as student trustees, representing all colleges throughout Illinois, and bringing about and advocating the needs of the basis of students through the colleges, and pretty much bringing it to the Illinois Community College Board. And pretty much, when we held those elections, I, you know, posted myself for secretary, and I won the position of secretary by a vote of eight votes, so, yeah. But, yeah.
All right.
Thank you. But I can't wait to see what this new role brings and what experiences I can be able to bring through being a part of this board and committee, so. But, pretty much, to end that on a good note, I'd like to just respectfully submit this, and that's it. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Leave them at number four. I still like those reports, okay? Leave them at number four. Okay, trustee comments will start down. Crystal?
I'm good.
I'd just like to remind us at this time, since Crystal's a resident of Belvedere, that our next committee of the whole is at the ATC, at Belvedere. If you do what you can to spread the word, let them know that we still care, we still have our presence out there, we'll be there in four, so. You know, I think Bob came up with that idea a number of years ago, and I think it was a great idea, so, so hope to see him be there. So, Gloria?
I just have a quick question about our calendar. As I was reviewing it and looking at some of the events that I want to attend, is this calendar just an internal piece, or is it out, is it for the public as well?
The board packet is public.
Yeah, I know, but does, do people get the board packet?
The events. It has these events? The reason I ask is because I don't see the trustee board meetings listed on here. So, I was just wondering if it's external, maybe that's why we don't have as big a response, or is this something that was decided not to have?
You think? Nobody cares about us, Gloria.
I'm sorry?
You think if they put it on the calendar?
Well, remind me to be here, but I was just curious.
Is the, the calendar focused on facilities? Specifically, Patrick, you want to speak? There's, they're focused specifically on the facility use, and that's why I don't think every program that we have, like remote programs, stuff like that, are shared, but it also, on the main calendar, we have all of our programs, whether it's community-related or or not, should be able to see. Am I missing one?
And also, under the board section on the, on the website, our whole list of past and future for the current year are listed there.
Yes, the boards are always, and then we give you even more when we post it and share it out.
It's a good question.
Well, yeah, and I guess I'm, I'm, I think the main question is if it was a community one, because it does have a community column, and I was just curious.
Well, it's kind of like, that question's kind of related to, I think, like our personnel report. It's not a complete coming and going of, of things that happen here, and that calendar is more focused at, you know, like you said, building events and stuff, but you want more inclusive things.
Oh, no, no, I was just curious. Thank you.
Good question.
Question, John?
No, I'm going to agree with Gloria. I think the trustee meeting should be on it, because we do use a facility, so. So, good point, Gloria.
Thank you.
So, the calendar on the web has the board meetings posted, so that's the one that everybody sees throughout the community, but that one is not, the one that you see at committee hold is not external, Doc.
It's fine.
But the board meetings, now that we're streaming them, we're getting 50 to 60, sometimes 70, views each meeting.
And I hear we're a great sleep aid in that regard.
By the way.
Yeah. So, Bob?
What?
Report?
Nice segue.
Just something that, just to file away and maybe take advantage of, District 205 is now almost ready to open up the College and Career Education Center at the former Stenchrum Center. I think the opening is going to be somewhere late October, early November, and I don't know how many new programs they have, but looking at their academies, I mean, all the way from, from health sciences to welding, to manufacturing, to engineering, to media production and IT, and, I mean, like I say, I don't know how many new programs there are, but it seems to me that that would be a pathway for some of our future students. I don't know how, what that means, but it'd be interesting if we can get an invite when they do formally open it, because I'd, you know, I think we should take a look, see what it looks like.
Also, regarding invites, did you guys receive an invite from RPS Superintendent Search? There's one that says elected officials, and it's either September 30th, October 1st, but you guys are elected officials, I'm wondering.
You're just trying to get rid of one of us, right? You just want us to apply for that job and?
No, I didn't get it.
I didn't get any.
No, interesting.
What is it for?
Well, the superintendent position, they're trying to get the voice of the community and develop a leadership profile for.
No, I did not get an invite.
Those positions are already open, but they're.
They're reaching out and soliciting to the public at all different levels.
Yeah.
Students, business leaders and the like, and seeing what they would like to see, you know, different or the same, maybe, in, in their leadership going forward, so.
There are some open times, too, but it's September 30th and October 1st. You can look that up on the website.
Anything else, Bob? Okay. Jesse Nelson?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have to say that I was riding up and down the Great River Road this past week on my motorcycle with my son on his motorcycle, and it is one of the most beautiful areas of the country. Very impressive, Mississippi River is just powerful and grand and all of that, and there's a lot of, of, for lack of a better word, green space as you go north up, either the Iowa side is beautiful, and so is the Wisconsin side, the Minnesota side, they're just outstanding. And along the way, I was able to stop in Nelson, Wisconsin, and get a T-shirt.
Is that it?
That's it for now.
Okay, thanks. And I'd just like to say, and I know we, we all like talking and hearing ourselves sometimes, but to those 50 and 60 people out there who are maybe watching us right now, I'd like to thank, and I think we all agree on this, I'd like to thank all the present part-time, full-time students, credit, non-credit, and all, for enrolling here and taking classes here. I mean, we wouldn't be here if it wasn't for you and your enrollment, and we, I mean, know that the staff enjoys and takes great pride in providing service to you all out there and on campus, so thank you very much for being part of the larger RBC community, so thank you. Foundation liaison report.
Okay, I got quite a few things. We had our board meeting last week, and let me go down the list here. The downtown fundraising, which was $2.5 million, Brittany has indicated that they pretty well have got the commitments for that amount, and the board has approved going out for three $500,000 naming rights for each of the three fields that are being converted into artificial turf. So, if she is able to bring that in, that'll be a total of $4 million of fundraising during this fiscal area. With respect to scholarships, there were 405 awards made this past, this current year. We had $874,000 available, and of that, $700,000 was awarded, so that means we left $170,000 left on the table, mainly because not enough application, good applications, so. Anyway, there is money there for scholarships, and I can't say enough, we got to keep getting the word out. Several scheduled items, the, there is an alumni breakfast meeting on the 16th of October at the Stenchrum Center here, and the topic is going to be a scholarship panel, and that'll involve, you know, key people to talk about scholarship opportunities. It's usually pretty well-attended, 90 or so people will, will be there. November 7th will be the annual scholarship luncheon, and I know all the trustees will be invited, and I would certainly encourage you to be there. It's always close to 200 people now, you know, it's quite, quite a good event. The, what do you call it, the CEO Challenge, sorry, CEO Challenge has been approved for next April. It'll be the second annual CEO Challenge with a goal of $100,000 to be raised. We did this one here this year, and they brought in 72 or so thousand dollars, and I think that's, it was a good event, a lot of CEOs that, even though their organizations give money, some of them, they've never seen the campus, so it's a good marketing tool, and I'm glad to see that they're going to do it again. I think, I think that's it.
Well, I've, I've got a follow-up, and maybe you know, or maybe one of the staff knows, so how much, we had, you said we left, there's $170,000 of scholarship money left on the table, right?
Yep.
It seems to me this has happened before, even when, like, we opened up the ATC and we offered up some cash for that, a good chunk of it was left on the, on the table, and I'm not asking for an answer on it now, but I do want staff to come back with a thoughtful report on whether or not it's, you know, people don't know about it, or they're just not interested in it, or maybe we're not doing enough to explain that these are opportunities, or a combination of all, you know, all three, but what can we do to make sure people know that we have this available and that they, that they actually take advantage of it?
Well, I do know that Brittany and her team do go out to the high schools.
I know.
I do know that, you know, they make the word around, even on the campus, they do different things. They also have a sec, what they call a second chance, which is a limited period of time in September, they open up the gates again. Part of it is, yes, people knowing and wanting to take advantage of the scholarships.
We've got people that are working really hard to beat down the doors, get donors to contribute, and then we have the money available, and then it's left on the table, and I feel bad because we have people putting in good, hard time to make that money available to the students.
And part of it's, and part of it's the, the scholarship fund and what their criteria is, too.
Yes.
So, if they're saying, look, to get a engineering scholarship, you need a 3.0.
Right.
And if you don't have enough applications that meet the 3.0, then you don't get a chance to get the scholarship fund, so part of it's that.
We've been, we, Brittany and I have been working with donors who have some of those more restrictive criteria, asking them to maybe reduce it and give the student opportunity to produce a 3.0 by the end of the first semester and things like that, so we're waiting to hear back from some of them, but that will help to spread it. And I believe we're going to have Brittany do our RBC Foundation Report October, you know, coming up.
October, November?
Yeah, October, so she'll be able to address some of that, those questions.
All right. Well, thank you very much. The personnel report is listed for your review. Did anybody have any questions on it? We don't vote on it, so. And the Freedom of Information Act report's been presented. Any questions on that report? Okay. Well, item K, journey into closed session's already been dealt with, so we don't need to deal with K or L, because we've dealt with it, so I'd like to announce the date of the next committee of the whole meeting, October 14th, 2025, 5:15 PM. The meeting will be held in room 1300 Advanced Technology Center, 1400 Big Thunder Boulevard, Belvedere, Illinois, and it's changed for this date only, October 2025, but we do this annually at the Advanced Technology Center in recognition of Manufacturing Month. And then the date of the next regular board meeting is October 28th, 2025, at 5:15 PM. The meeting will be held in the Performing Arts Room, P R 0214, located in Educational Resource Center, ERC, on the main campus. So, I hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Nelson, seconded by Blake. Roll call.
Crystal?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Bob, yes? Gloria?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And Paul?
Yes. Thank you very much for your participation and your patience this evening. You all have a good rest of the week now.
Good job, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.